I ordered the Novi Library meeting and I will ask you all to join me in saying the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. On our agenda here since we would be welcoming our new member, Ajita Gualapu, however, unfortunately, she was called away. She was very excited to attend also. She was really looking forward to the meeting, but she was called away to India due to her father's illness, so she had to go. Like many of you here, probably, well, not you, but a number of you here, she's with the sandwich generation, you know, where you have older adults and they're really far away being in India. And then she also has. And she also has children that are in school. So anyway, we're all thinking of her family this during this challenging time. I know she would want to be here. So, Mr. Secretary, please call the roll.
Trustee Crawford.
Here.
Trustee Dooley.
Here.
Trustee Gualapu is absent, excused. Trustee Guramurti.
Here.
Trustee Stirring.
Here.
Trustee Bartlett's here and Trustee Chere Curry is absent.
Okay. Thank you. Approval of the agenda, are there any additions to the agenda? If not, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda as printed. Member Bartlett? You want to?
Yes. Can I give you a change?
Sure.
I apologize because it's me. I need to call out a couple of things for you.
Okay.
Under approval of agenda, consent agenda, it should read approved minutes of March 23rd, 2023, including addendum one, which is strategic planning notes. I just, I just want to have the correct information there.
Okay.
And then if you move down to reports, the student representative report should be March 2023, not February.
Okay.
Thank you.
All righty. Okay. Two corrections to the, to the agenda. Anybody want to make a motion? Member Bartlett, you want to make a motion?
The tribute come from someone else since I wrote the minutes.
Oh, good point, I would say.
I'll make a motion.
Okay. Member Guramurti. And I'll look for a second.
I'll second.
Okay. We have a motion and we have a second. Any discussion? Nope, seeing none? Please call the roll.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Trustee Guramurti.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. And moving on to the consent agenda, I'll ask for a motion to approve with the correction.
I move to approve the consent agenda with the correction.
Okay. Member Stirring, a second. Member Dooley, you want to second that, don't you?
I'll second.
Okay. We're going to be short of people to vote, so we're going to have to.
Yeah, so we should.
Yeah. So you all have to do. Okay. So the motion is to approve the consent agenda with the one correction and there's no discussion, I don't think. All right, please call the roll.
Trustee Guramurti.
Yes.
Trustee Stirring.
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford.
Yes.
Trustee Dooley.
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay. We don't have any presentations this evening, so we're going right on to our first public comment. So in order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question and answer session. However, it is an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board and citizens must state their first, last name and address. Anyone wish to speak? Nope. I don't see anybody rushing forward, so we'll, we'll move on. Reports. We don't have a student representative here this evening and so.
We do not. I'd be happy to take any questions if you have any for the information that's presented to you on page 15. I do want to call out to you a flyer that I put at your seats because it came to me after the board packet was created and I wanted you to be aware of it, knowing that it's coming up in May and your meeting is late in May. But there is a clothing drive that was, which is in partnership with our Novi Library Teen Advisory Board, which is fitting under this particular information, and a Girl Scout troop locally. They're going to be doing a clothing drive specifically for career wear, where you can drop off gently used items such as blazers, suits, dress blouses, specifically for women. And the library will be accepting the items. There will be a box that will be put in our lobby area from May 1st to May 31st. So just wanted to make you all aware of that.
Well, I hope we can fill those one box and get more boxes.
Yes, thank you.
So that would be great. Great program. Okay. Moving on to my president's report. It's a little bit lengthy, sorry. No, I'm not really sorry, but anyway, our, our new board member, Ajita, was onboarded on Saturday as Julie, Julie and I both did that and she was very enthusiastic and we, she got her manual, she had a lot of, she had not a lot of questions, but she had questions and it was, and then Julie took her on a tour of the library. So it was, it was a great onboarding, I must say. The slate of officers, of course, is in your packet. You all were encouraged to contact Secretary Bartlett if you wish to be considered for a board office position, but you can still be, you can still be considered for an office. All we have to do is just, you know, submit verbally during the election process. So a big thank you to all who have served as officers. It is above and beyond your board position, you know, and committees and all that. So I really want to thank everybody that has agreed to be an officer and also will be voting tonight for those positions. You have noted in the slate that there is at least one opening and that's for secretary. And according to our bylaws, in the event that no one volunteers to fill an office, any office, that officer will be appointed automatically based on seniority. So committee assignments are going to be, new committee assignments, and I encourage all of you board members to contact the board president because the board president will be making appointments to committees and that will be announced at the May meeting, the May 25th meeting. So if you wish to serve on a particular committee, just contact the board president and, and tell them that, what you wish to serve on. And if you want to be chair, too, that's okay, too. Another item that isn't really on the agenda, it wasn't included in the agenda, but I wanted to tell you about it. I was recently appointed by the mayor to serve on a special city committee that is charged with the responsibility of assessing the needs of Novi senior adult, of the Novi senior adult community. So on Monday, our good director, Farkas, attended the senior needs assessment committee meeting and presented data from the strategic planning process that related in particular to older adult needs and wants. So her presentation actually provided the committee with valuable information and they really appreciated her being there. Once again, out in the community, you know, in addition to her job as, in, in the library, she's out in the community doing those kinds of things. I wanted to point out to everyone, though, that the type of collaboration and sharing of information is certainly ideal, right? But does not typically happen, unfortunately. Departments and committees do not always see how everything is interrelated and how things are related. And an example is from the same committee meeting where Director Farkas presented the information. The chairperson, Laura Casey, provided the needs assessment committee with information regarding her recently attending the 2023 Michigan Municipal League Conference in Lansing. And she shared this PowerPoint presentation, this PowerPoint presentation right here, quite thick, and a lengthy thing that she went to. And she talked about, because so much of it relates to not only older adults with people with mobility issues and it was this Lansing, it was in Lansing, and she shared this information and it is all about using barrier-free design to address equity issues. And I immediately thought how valuable that information would be for not only our DEI committee, but also for our strategic planning process. And so if, you know, if we can get the information from her, it has a lot of great information and I hope she got notes in addition to this packet, this PowerPoint presentation. And that's what I mean. You know, it seems like in many committees and departments, there are silos and I'm sure you've seen that in your own work experience. And everybody kind of presents stuff to their own committee, but it takes kind of rare individuals to think how this information should also or could also be shared. So as I said, it's, it's information that I think would really be valuable to us. And so continuing to think about the sharing of information, tonight I passed out a, a little two-page thing to you, each one of you. I provided each one of you with some informal data. And that data relates to this trip that I, I, every year I take this group of ladies on a trip. I've been doing it for 25 years and I've tried to stop doing it, you know, because it's really a lot of work. But anyway, what I thought while I was on this trip, I've been providing this trip, as I said, for like 25 years, and it's like a day conference, ladies only, I mean, it's like a conference on fun, fitness, education and entertainment. So from the time they get on the bus in Novi to the time they come back in the evening. So I just did, did this trip. And during one of the sessions that I provided for them, I explained that I'm appointed to this Novi older adults needs assessment committee and that I would be meeting last week. And I asked each one of them to write down three things that they think that they need or want in their life right now. Three things. Now, you think about this, these are all ladies ranging in age from five, 50 to 94 and average age is probably mid 70s. So these are all comments that they made regarding what they need in their life this time, at this time. So this information could be a part of our strategic plan, you know, it could be additional information, but it also would be helpful to the diversity, equity and inclusion committee because some of the things they were saying is like, always have a table for jigsaw puzzles. I mean, it might even be possible for us to have a jigsaw puzzle out at the library and keep it out there. They want a lounge for meetings, we have that. They also wanted a gathering place. That was one thing that they said was really important and I'm not going to read all the things they said, but they wanted a place to have coffee and be with other people. One of the other comments is that people, a lot of older people live alone and they are lonesome, which causes depression and a variety of other illnesses, all kinds of illnesses and, including depression. So they need someplace to go. While I know that we don't provide fitness and exercise kind of programming, if you looked at activities that they mentioned that they can't do without, day trips was very high on the list. Also, they wanted speakers and they wanted lecturers on, you know, travel, new skills, cooking for one, storytelling, which was something that I was really a little surprised to see that. Acupuncture. They were really interested also in book discussion groups. That was something that a number of them mentioned. Concerts and music. Free informational kind of programs. Crafts, learning something new. All of, many of the things and in fact, much of the, the items that they mentioned, we provided the Novi library. And maybe they aren't aware of a lot of the things that are provided at the library, but it sort of confirms and affirms what the strategic plan also was telling us. One thing that I know, because it was only ladies, they probably would, never would have shared this information in a group, but they shared it with me. They want higher toilet seats in public buildings, which may sound strange to all of you, but I can attest to the fact that I've become a snob about toilet seats myself. And so, you know, I mean, it's something we don't think about, we don't really discuss and many of them would never have made that comment in a strategic planning thing, but it's something to be aware of. And also they had a lot of questions about technology, you know, communication. So I just brought this information to you because once again, every committee I go to, I try to think globally about how this information can be used. And I was thinking, well, this is information that we need, you know, in the DEI committee and other committees, as well as the strategic plan. So anyway, that's something I wanted to, to share with you. Continuing on, your packet included the resolution that, the proclamation, anyway, proclaiming that National Library Week. And I don't know if you all had a chance to read it, but it's, the Library Week is April 23rd to the 29th and we're there now. But one of the, the paragraph in there that I thought was really, really speaks volumes about what the library is about, says, whereas libraries play a critical role in, in the economic vitality of communities. And I think that's something that a lot of us don't think about, the economic trickle down effect of economics, you know, brought to us by the library. Also, they are cornerstones for democracy, promoting the free exchange of information and ideas for all. So during this week, Mayor Gatt has encouraged all residents to visit the library to explore the wealth of resources available. So I just wanted to point that out in case you hadn't had an opportunity to read through that proclamation. Thought I would point it out to you. Okay. So Treasurer Chere Curry is not with us tonight, but if any of you have questions or would like to say anything, I'm sure that Director Farkas can answer any questions regarding the treasurer's report. Okay. All right. Moving along then to the director's report.
Thank you so much. I'll start with the fact, and it adds right to what you were saying, President Crawford, about recognizing National Library Week, but I did receive from Representative Ann Ballin's office, a special tribute recognizing Novi Public Library and National Library Week as well. So I wanted to make note of that and to call her out and appreciate her for doing that for us and sending us this tribute. So we did receive that, too. Going to my report on page 30, I always like to first start with the anniversaries that we will be recognizing at the library for the month of May, which is coming up. And our first is Gail Anderson, our very own programming coordinator. Gail is celebrating seven years. You, I know everyone has been to a program that Gail has hosted. She does a fabulous job and she's part of our information services department. So congratulations to Gail on seven years. And then following is Jessica Holowicki. Jessica is part of our information services department as well, two years. She's a librarian. She started in our technology department and working with iCube and our iCube space and then as she graduated, moved in as an, as a librarian and is still staying in touch with our iCube as well. So we're very glad to have her. And then Nicole Williams will be celebrating two years, but I shared with you this week that Nicole is leaving us. She has received a new position and is going to be leaving us next week. So I will be looking for a new HR person, an HR specialist at the library. But I wish her well and she would have been two years. Then we have our statistics following and information that was asked about, from the library staff, about collecting fines for overdue materials. You have that in your packet. I also wanted to point out that there was some outreach to the Novi township. It's a very small group of residents that are part of the township and they're going to be voting on their particular part of a millage that they pay approximately $7,800 that goes to the library for their taxes and use of the library. And so what I did is I sent out just an informational piece to them about the library and the different resources and services that they have. So I wanted to give you what that looked like in the packet, page 34 and 35. I'm happy to entertain any questions that you have.
One thing I wanted to ask about, how big was that vehicle that hit the car counter? The thing that was.
So it, it's, I, it did hit it, but I, I don't want to, it did not ruin the awning. It took out a camera and it took out some siding that we have to replace, but it, what happened was like it scraped it because it was too high. The driver didn't realize the distance between when, when she went under it. She really shouldn't have been under it. It was a large van that, it's, it's similar to one of our senior type vans. So it, it had a high top, but we're fine. It's, it's not a huge claim or anything on the library.
Okay. So when we fix it, is it going to be put in a different location? Are we going to raise it higher?
Yes. No. The, it did not ruin the actual structure of the awning at all. It just took off some of the aluminum, like it ripped off a little bit of aluminum in one of the, in our car counter gauge. That's been moved already. And then also what we're going to do, once it's fixed, we're going to add a caution, a yellow caution as you come through.
Good idea.
For the.
The clearance.
The amount of.
Clearance.
Space, yes.
I was going to ask that.
Yes. So we'll, we'll make sure that that gets put on once we, once we get it fixed.
One thing else I wanted to mention is that I really did appreciate reading the, the staff comments on pages 31 to through 35, the staff comments regarding the collecting of fines.
Yes.
For overdue material. So, you know, even though staff, staff in general indicate that they didn't, they don't like the negative feelings and they really, they don't like having negative interaction with patrons and that was all created because of the fines, but several comments spoke to the lack of understanding among some patrons that due dates are not irrelevant. You're still, things are still due to be brought back to the library because it seems like it, that one of the staff members mentioned that, she spoke with a woman recently who, whose book had gone to lost, meaning, meaning blocked account. And she said, oh, I thought we weren't paying attention to those dates anymore. So.
Yeah.
I wonder if there's.
We need.
Something additional that we need to do.
We'll do some more communication. Absolutely.
To, to sort of make people aware that just because we're not collecting a fine doesn't mean we don't want you to bring it back.
Exactly.
We're waiting for the book.
And if, yeah, if, if a person, yeah, if it, how are they contacted then if, if the, if the book is overdue and they still haven't brought it back? Because if it's highlighted, it means that somebody wants it, right? I mean, somebody's waiting for that book or whatever the materials are.
So you have, you have, you have three, you have two renewals that.
Two renewals.
Automatically happen.
Yep.
And then it goes, if we don't receive it back in 21 days from that last renewal, it goes to lost, which you get notification that you are, it's lost and you're going to be paying for the book. So you get those, you know, and we generate them a couple of times.
Oh.
So, yeah. I mean, we are communicating.
Yeah.
I, I don't know, you know, I, I don't know how people read their email and, and they choose, do you want, do you want to receive information by mail or by email? Most of our people, you know, choose the email approach. So we, we are trying to get them back, but I, I gotta tell you.
Maybe a little reminder even in the, the e-news, you know, that's sent out.
Yes.
Maybe just a reminder because some people just maybe don't understand that.
Right, right. When I read that, actually, I thought we could, we could do some, did you knows and some quick things.
Yeah.
Point out.
That's what I'm thinking.
Just what that means when, you know, when you, that there is a due date, we do expect it back, those types of quick points, absolutely.
Yeah. Okay. Okay. Any questions for Director Farkas? Yes. Member Dooley.
Hi, yes, thank you.
Yeah.
Real quick, I, I kind of wanted maybe to speak to the lending library in terms of our new IT person and he's discovering a lot of things that probably we didn't realize previously, but it sounded like there was issues from the recent ice storm, which I think was a couple of months ago, is that right? And something was impacting the lending library.
Oh, we had a connection that was not connected, yes. We lost a connection at the, at the Lake Shore Library.
Do you get an alert?
We do.
Okay.
Yes. So everything talks back to the building.
Okay.
So it was, it was actually, it was something with our, our Envisionware, the company.
Yeah.
It wasn't something that was affected through our internet connection, everything was fine.
Okay.
It was something having to do with a malfunction of something with the machine itself.
Okay.
Yeah, okay. But we were able to get that resolved.
Okay, thank you, yes.
You're welcome.
And then the other thing was, I know that we've kind of been talking about this internally, but it sounds like we're going to have to update and upgrade our wifi.
Yes.
Do we have any inkling yet on what that cost is going to be?
I have, we are gathering quotes now.
Okay.
So I have one and I'm, I'm working on, we always do three.
Yeah.
In order to see what that cost is.
Okay.
But yes, and that will be something that we did not plan for.
I know.
That, yeah.
How many, how many, if you want to put it on record, Julie, how many years outdated do you think we are?
Um, we're, we're outdated a number of years.
Okay.
Yes. So we are, we're definitely needing this upgrade, there's no question, it has to be done.
Thank you and your staff for researching and finding that out. So I'm assuming this is probably going to end up in finance and building and grounds.
And it's been shared already that we're working on it for those quotes to be brought to the finance committee.
Okay. Hopefully we'll see it maybe next month.
I hope that's.
I know you need it.
So Jeff, our IT person is working with different vendors right now to get that information.
All right. Thanks, Julie.
You're welcome.
Thank you. That's it for.
Anything else? Anyone?
I'll just comment on the proclamation for the National Library Week. For those of you who didn't either have a chance to be at the council meeting or to see it on one of the tape replays, it was a very nice presentation.
Thank you.
By Mayor Gatt to Julie and the cat who were both there to accept the proclamation.
Thank you so much.
It was, it was a nice presentation of, of this proclamation for the library.
He's a big man.
Good.
Our whole council is, it's great. Yeah. Thank you, Mark.
Anyone else? Okay. Moving on now to our second public comment. In order to hear all citizen comments at a reasonable hour, the library board requests that speakers respect the three-minute time limit. This is not a question and answer session, however, it's an opportunity to voice your thoughts with the library board and citizens must state their first, last name and address.
Hi.
Hi.
Sharon Trumpy, Novi. First, I just wanted to thank Julie for the, my ability to participate in the strategic retreat. It was an amazing opportunity. I loved participating and I think as President Crawford pointed out, that has direct correlation to your vote on fine free tonight. It was very clear to me that one of the top priorities has to be reducing the workload and the stress on your staff. And I see little purpose in returning to fines when it clearly is a cause of stress and an increase in workload for your staff. So I hope that that will be considered. I also wanted to mention that, I agree with you, President Crawford, that equity is also about the needs of senior citizens. Equity is not only about race, but it is also about race. And I hope that there is some consideration of you being part of the DEI committee so that you can address those concerns as well. On that same note, I was disappointed to see that there are two candidates for the vice president spot and no one for the secretary. And although I know I don't have a vote and you have no obligation to listen to me in any way, I do want to state that I have appreciated trustee Dooley's consistent attendance and her exemplary performance as the vice president. And I hope that you would also consider that it's important that our community see women like trustee Dooley, women of color, who are parenting small children and who can address those concerns. So I hope that she will retain that position, although I do not question your abilities, President Crawford. You've done an admirable job in your position, but I hope that we will continue to have that diversity of representation on the executive board. I also wanted to just voice my disappointment to hear that Nicole will be leaving. That will be a hard spot to fill, I'm sure, and I have appreciated her work for the library. Thank you very much.
Anyone else wish to come forward? Okay. Seeing none, we'll go on to committee reports. Any committee reports from anyone? I do have, oh, member Dooley, you go first.
Oh, okay. Thank you.
Go ahead. Just real quick, so this past month, the DEI trustee committee didn't meet yet. Just because right now we're in the middle of strategic planning and one of our biggest goals was to also work on the scorecard for MPL that the staff has been working on. We're kind of tabling that right now just because strategic planning is bringing so much on staff's plate. And so we're going to be working on other things and definitely we're going to put something on the books for May, but I just wanted to let everyone know that's why we didn't have a meeting. It's just because we didn't have anything on the table that we needed to bring forward yet. Um, strategic planning was very busy, but also trustee Gura Murthy is, um, and I mentioned this previously, she is working on, um, a document for the Board of Trustees that'll pull a whole bunch of different resources with regards to diversity, equity, and inclusion, um, that maybe this will be a living document so that going forward, we can add more resources to it, like trustee Crawford brought an article, um, that kind of focused on ageism and, you know, things like that, that we can add to this document so that the trustees kind of have like a one-stop shop almost to be able to, to look at different information and training and help keep us current with regards, um, to information on this topic, since it's very important for our community. Um, and that's it. My other committee has summary in there, so events, marketing, fundraising, so that's it.
Okay. Um, I'll mention the HR committee. We did have a meeting and there was a lot to discuss because we hadn't met in a while. Um, but one of the longest discussions took place regarding the issue of serious staff burnout. That was one of the things that we discussed, um, for a considerable amount of time. So the lack of continuing inability actually to, um, to fill all the vacancies that we have currently, and this is not something that's just, um, Novi Library, this is libraries all across the region and all across the state. But, um, this has resulted in, you know, staff has had to step up to take over, uh, extra hours of the people that are missing. And so, uh, that has not helped the situation any. You know, we did raise the staff pay, but, um, there's other issues with them, you know, that's causing this burnout. So one of the options that was the most favorable was to consider a reduction of hours. I mean, as hard as we, you know, we talked about a variety of ways we might do that, uh, because we are having budget issues as well, as well as staffing issues. Um, but we talked about hours and/or days of operation. The most logical day that it seemed that we might consider to close would be Sunday because that would take care of, um, a variety of things, that would save funding as well as allow staff to have a welcome day off. I think that's something that, um, that they would really appreciate, you know, and would help some with the, to alleviate maybe a little bit of the burnout. So it's something that we're gonna continue to discuss, and Director Farkas is gonna be bringing us additional information, uh, and providing additional data from libraries in the region about their hours of operation. We're already open a lot more than, uh, some of the, uh, the, uh, the libraries, um, that are larger than us. We're already open a lot. So, um, anyway, the HR committee then will be making considerations and, uh, perhaps bringing forward a recommendation to the, uh, the board. So, yes.
So in our strategic planning survey, we had a few questions, a couple of questions on the whole operation, did, was that also considered in coming up or in the discussions?
Uh, well, we, we talked about the strategic plan, but I don't think that we talked about, because we don't have the full strategic plan and everything yet. Uh, no, we didn't really talk about how that would relate. We were, we were talking about, you know, human resources and what can we do right now to help alleviate this problem of having so many openings and also having this staff burnout that was mentioned in the strategic plan.
So to reduce the hours, there were, I remember a couple of questions, what time will work for patrons to come in, what times won't work?
That information's in the plan.
Yeah, that would be a good data point to use.
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah. And we do have that, yeah.
Yeah, we'll continue discussing that for sure. But, I mean, that was one of the, the more preferable options, you know? I, I know that it's something that we, we've never had to consider this before, we've never had to really think about it, but, you know, everything's on the table at this point, so.
Okay.
And that is all. Any other committees? Bylaws, oh, yes, Member Bartlett.
Uh, well, the Finance Committee met and in fact, you got a couple of, um, action items, but I won't, I won't be labor to go into what we, we're bringing forward to the board tonight. Uh, but one of the things we also discussed was the budget. We did briefly discuss the hours. Uh, we did briefly discuss a little bit into the, into what we've seen in the strategic planning. Uh, for example, we have a, it appears that we have more customers looking for a nine o'clock opening, um, of the library, but, yeah, again, because of the budget constraints, a nine o'clock opening means an earlier closing. And an earlier closing, what do we do with adult programming? Because as soon as you say, okay, I'm not going to stay open till nine, I'm going to stay open till eight, it's very tough to have an adult programming with people that work that starts before seven PM. And if you start it at seven PM, they're not going to necessarily be finished by eight to close the library. So there's a, I mean, it's, it's a lot of, a lot of moving parts. And one of the things we did discuss oddly enough is Sunday.
Really?
Because it's a day where, okay, it's, I mean, the, the building gets, I mean, you know, the building, you could probably, you know, dial back maybe on the heat, you could, there's a lot of things you can do with a closed building. And it addresses, as I've mentioned multiple times on the, regarding the budget, it's no secret, our budget is all people. And it is all hours and people, and that's, and that cuts, that cuts a significant amount of staff time as well.
Okay, Member Sturring, did you have a?
Uh, in regard to the Policy Committee, uh, Policy Committee met, um, to discuss, uh, the fees for the damaged materials, which is really a, a board action item later on. But we looked at the statistics that, uh, in regard to damaged books, and we determined that since we've had a fine-free library, we've really had less damage for lost books than what we had before. We looked at the numbers and it's kind of declining number over the period of time. But more to talk about that at, at the time that we do the board action, but I wanted to mention that. And then while I've got the floor, just wanted to mention one other thing. Uh, four of us trustees, Aprilia, Kat, Kathy, and I, uh, last month for our Reading Week, we read stories to the first and second graders at Deerfield Elementary. And for me, uh, it's been a long time since I-
There's Novi Woods.
Or, no, it's been a long time-
Maybe you were at Deerfield.
No, 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 no. It's been a long time for me since, since I've been in a hallway where there's hundreds of kids neatly walking through, you know, going to their class, but I mean, it was, I hope it was enjoyable for the kids as it was for me to read it.
Yeah, that was great, no. It was a great experience, we had a great time. And they want us back.
Oh, I didn't know that.
Oh, no, they'd like to have us back. It's good to hear. You know, please, thanks staff that picked out the, uh, books for us because they did a great job in picking out suggestions, because I found new books I wanted to read to my grandchildren.
That was Emily Rush, our, our children's librarian, she's fantastic, yeah.
I think my grandchildren now, you know, they're like twenty-one, they're getting a little old for me to sit with and read books, however, you know, there's still some young ones coming along, maybe I'll still be able to get them. Okay, any other committee reports? All right. Moving on to matters for library board action, the slate of officers has been presented, and I will turn it over to Mr. Secretary, who will conduct the, um, election.
Okay, um, the first office we have on the list is for president, and we need to open up the board. Uh, right now, we have, um, the, um, Mark Sturring has put his name into nomination. We do not have any other nominations, so I need to open up the board for other nominations if they're at the pleasure of the board.
Anybody? Then I'll move for, um, a voice of acclamation.
Okay, all in favor of, um, Mark Sturring, please raise their hands. Okay, Mark is voted president at five and zero. We have two candidates for vice president, um, Kat Dooley and Kathy Crawford. Do we have any other nominations for vice president? Okay, we'll have, um, by a show of hands, all those voting for Kat Dooley.
Kat Dooley, okay.
All those voting for Kathy Crawford.
I guess I gotta vote for myself.
Uh, Kathy Crawford is VP. I've checked the bylaws, I was a little bit concerned because we have five folks, but there's nothing in the bylaws that says we need four votes, we need a majority. So unless somebody comes up with something else, um, you know, Kathy Crawford is the vice president. Treasurer, uh, the only person to put their name in for treasurer was, um, uh, Shreeni Cherekuri. Uh, we'll open up to the board for other nominations. Seeing none, uh, all those voting for Shreeni Cherekuri for treasurer, please raise their hands. And Shreeni is, uh, five zero. And then finally, we have a position for secretary. We have nobody who stepped forward and said they want to be secretary.
It's a big job.
So we're opening up to nominations.
I mean, I would like you to continue, but I know that it's been a big job, Brian, so.
Well, it's, it's not so much the big job. I spoke at this table last year when I took over this job, and I'm actually kind of happy that our new member is not here tonight. Because my biggest fear is, is that she stepped forward and said, I'll do the job. Because right now, there is no definition in our bylaws that describes this job. I stated that last year, I was very clear, and our bylaws have not gotten better with age, folks. I mean, I'm going to put it bluntly. And hence, I guess I'm going to, I would entertain running again, but I want anybody that votes for me to understand, this is not Happy Days Are Here Again.
Sure.
I am not going to sit by and see this and be in the same position next year.
Yeah.
Where I can't go to a new member and say, here's the job, here's what it takes. And so we will either be back to our bylaws as they are written today, which is not going to be happy for a lot of people, or we are going to actually work on this. And if, if you, if you're gonna sit, if we're gonna sit back and say, hey, wow, that's over, we can go, go forward, don't vote for me, because you're not gonna be happy. So that's where, that's where I stand. But I will run again based on, we're going to get some work on, we're gonna do some work on this, we're gonna fix this.
We need to, for sure.
Next month is committee assignments, and now that Mark's voted in, I mean, you'll have a say on how that committee is made up and who's gonna chair it, so. The work can get done.
With that caveat, I would like to nominate Brian Bartlett for secretary.
Okay.
And he agrees.
I agree.
With provisions.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Five, you have. All in favor, I guess.
All in favor?
You're it. You're it. And we will, we know we have a number of things to, um, to address in the bylaws. There, there's quite a few things that need to be, um, taken care of, so, thank you. And thanks for all that you've done, really, because the secretary job is probably, uh, the most time-consuming of all. So we appreciate you. You do such a great job, we can't, uh, you know, we need you there. So, um, oh, here, and I, I have something for you. I am passing this along to you.
Not yet. Not yet.
Why not?
Cause-
Oh. But still, you're gonna slide it over there. You're gonna slide it over there. Purchase with my own money, so it's a gift from me to you because, yeah.
You will be a hard act to follow, Kathy.
You're gonna be, well, I don't know, you'll do a fine job. You've done it before, so you know what to do, for sure, you know? And I'll be your wing person, so in case, you know, something happens, whatever, when you want to go on a little vacation or something. So, um, alrighty, our second matter for board, um, action is approval of the library financial reports, uh, recognizing, and this is kind of a formality and all that, um, Director Farkas talked about, we're gonna be just changing a number, it's a formality. So Julie, you want to explain how it came about?
Yes, so through the state of Michigan, they are cleaning up, um, accounts specifically that relate to public libraries, so they had us change our numbers. And I don't have to come to you as a board, but I like to because I like you to be aware of, you know, these changes and, and the budgets and how they're going to be called and so that you're aware of, you know, when I call it now two seventy-one instead of two sixty-eight, which I've done for fifteen years, you know, you have, you have a frame of reference. Also, there were a couple of numbers that did get changed that I called out and read on some of the accounts. And so it just, for me, I, I always just like to keep all of you in the loop. We have a finance committee, the finance committee also met, went through all of these, but it is just a formality, but I just, I like those noted for you and for history of the board itself.
Okay.
Is there a reason why they did that?
The, the state made those changes. Yeah, they're doing a lot of them across, what they, what they want to do is they want to have across the state, all libraries would be known with these numbers now, so if they do data and collecting, and they might do it, you know, by finances of, of certain categories, they can look at it.
Got it.
And there, at this time, there were libraries be, because of the different types of accounting they might be following, um, some are departments, some are, uh, they are district libraries, things like that. Not always did we have the same numbers to compare.
Okay.
Yeah, simple, but it's gotta be done by, by the end of the year, and the city, you know, had asked for it, but it was letting us know that it was gonna be changing.
Member Sturring.
Um, Julie, in our finance, um, meeting, um, we talked a little bit about category six five nine, which is the library book fine category. And depending on what we do with the, um, the third matter for, for the board tonight, do we have the ability to change that, or is that regulated by the state?
I-
Because if we approve a fine-free library, it seemed a little bit unusual to call it library book fines.
Instead of fees.
Instead of fees?
Yes.
And, and you had to get back to somebody, or they have to get back?
And I haven't had an answer yet, but I am working on it.
Okay, thank you, thank you.
I don't think it'll be a problem, but I, I just want to make sure, but yes, I will be checking on that for you, so that if I can make the change to library book fees, that's what I will change it to.
Thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay. I'll entertain a motion to approve this, uh, change. Member Sturring, you wanna make a motion?
I'll move to, to approve the, uh, changes in, in the budgets and the line items.
Okay, and Member Bart, oh, Member Bartlett?
Okay.
I'll let him do that, you can do the next one. Okay. And any more discussion about it? Well, seeing none, please call the roll.
Trustee Sturring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes. Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Gura Murthy?
Yes.
Motion passes five zero.
Okay.
Thank you.
Moving on to item number three, policy fees for damaged, destroyed, or lost materials. Um, and I know it was reviewed by the policy and the finance committee, uh, and I guess if there, for either of you, and Member Sturring, did you want to comment on that? Before we-
Yes.
Discuss further?
And I don't remember when, but a, a long time back, this board had decided that it wanted to go fine-free for a number of years during COVID. Last year, uh, we still wanted to continue to go fine-free, but on a temporary basis for the next year, and we wanted to review the materials whether or not the lost books and the damage for the lost books had increased or decreased or may remain the same during this period when we were fine-free. We, we got the statistics to show that we're actually losing less money on lost books and damaged books during the fine-free period than we were before. And that being the criteria that was established about a year ago, um, the policy committee, not necessarily unanimously, but a majority of the people in the policy committee has made this recommendation to continue fine-free.
Okay, but when we, uh, the material that is on page seventy-two, the item in red, library board approved the continuation?
That's the only thing that can be removed from the policy and the policy manual stays as is, an amendment of today's date.
Okay.
So it's, it's just removing the red and you'll no longer have a date associated with looking at or reviewing it.
Okay, let me ask for a motion first and then we'll discuss further.
We need a specific motion, yeah. We need a specific motion, yeah.
So, you want to make the motion, Member Dooley?
Sure. I'd, well, I'm going to speak to the policy. I'd like to make a motion that Novi Public Library goes fine-free, and in doing so, removes the provision on the current policy for fees, damaged, destroyed, or lost materials, which states, "The Library Board approved the continuation of fine-free status overdue Novi materials until June 30, 2023."
Thank you.
Is that specific enough?
Yes, it is.
Okay, good.
Okay, so, a second?
I second it.
Member Gur Murthy? Second it, so now, we can have further discussion. We have a motion, a second. Anybody else? What about the Finance Committee? What did you discuss in that, Member Bartlett?
Well, we discussed, as we, as Trustee Sturring had mentioned, a year ago, we had very long discussions about this, and we wanted to get this down to one issue. And that issue was, to put it bluntly, to get, do we get our stuff back? I mean, that was essentially what we, what we said. And it's clear that we are getting our stuff back. So, it's, it did not have the, it did not have an effect where, you know, we had more damaged books, more lost books, more fines from that standpoint. So, you know, it's, I mean, so there is a, there, you know, there is a bit of, if you look at the folks in the library saying, you know, as far as fines and so forth, there are some things that they do have to do to collect things, because they are still going after lost and damaged items. But, you know, the day-to-day, you know, 20 cents a day, or whatever we're charging, does not happen.
I thought it was kind of amazing that in the staff comments, most of the, I don't know, most of the discussion, which was angry or whatever, was about the small fee, was about the 20 cents, was, that seemed to be the bone of contention from, a lot of people didn't want to pay the 20 cents. So, I mean, it was kind of odd that you would think the larger fines would have been the problem, but I guess it wasn't. And I know there was some comment, and I think Member Cherecurry had mentioned before about, he was worried about the money, the loss of the money, but this money is never guaranteed. This money is not to pay staff. This money, $40,000, I think, I believe is what they, I mean, it's, it varies from year to year.
Right, but last time we had-
But, that amount of money, you shouldn't rely on that money for budget, you know, you just can't rely on that. So, you know, I think that those of us that are here, well, we'll see, we're going to vote, but, you know, I certainly am in agreement, and not, my mind has changed. I mean, in the very beginning, I still thought that a fine, because I know from myself, you know, and when we had children taking books out, and I was responsible for it, you know, it really, just the thought of getting a fine, or even being close to the deadline time, made me want to get in there and return the book, if I hadn't asked for additional time for it. So, I thought it was an incentive, but apparently, it really doesn't matter, so.
And just, just to add for all of you, we will, the staff is very creative, and they've already started, you know, suggesting some things of ways that, you know, with the concern of revenue, how we might be able to put, you know, a dollar to a few things, you know, and charge some things, and looking at some of the, some of the fees, I should say, that we've had in the past, that really haven't been upgraded, and with, you know, inflation and things going up like they have over the years, we've, we've exhausted some costs, you know, with the library, that maybe we should then be passing on to residents. Not, not huge, but, you know, it makes sense. We've seen it in our grocery stores and things, in terms of retail and stuff, so we are starting to look at those little bits of things that we can make changes to, that I think the community will understand.
Okay, I just, you know, and plus, I don't think that we should always consider, you know, I mean, there's a lot of talk about, well, everybody around us is doing it, you know, all the other libraries are doing it. I don't think that should ever be a reason for us not to discuss further, and not to really think about how it affects us in Novi. Just because others are doing it, or not doing something, doesn't mean we have to. So, but I think we've done our due diligence, I think we've really collected a lot of information. I'm glad that we didn't just jump, you know, jump into it and just go fine-free immediately. We really have, I've had a lot of discussion and have collected data, so that everybody now understands where we are with this process. So, I think we did a good job with that. So, I will now ask the Secretary if there's no further discussion. Seeing none, call the roll, please.
Trustee Crawford?
Yes.
Trustee Dooley?
Yes.
Trustee Gur Murthy?
Yes.
Trustee Sturring?
Yes.
Trustee Bartlett votes yes, five zero.
Okay.
MPL is fine-free now. Thank you.
Yeah, okay. Of course, we always want you to take a look at all the upcoming dates and the things, when the library's going to be closed, and also, what is coming up. I wanted to call your attention to the flyer that I gave each one of you about Document Donation Day. Sadly, in Novi, we lose, you know, a lot of people think Novi doesn't have a history. We have a very rich history, but unfortunately, you know, a lot of people that have passed away are longtime residents, and their children don't know what these pictures are, or things get thrown away. We are losing libraries of stories. We are losing pictures and data that we would like to keep in our history room. And so, very often, we have what's called a Document Donation Day, and we have residents or anybody that has pictures, like from the Walnut Amusement Park, or, you know, we don't have that many buildings that you could take pictures of, you know, we never really had a downtown. So, we're asking for photographs, or any kind of documentation about an old home, for example, that maybe has a history from a homestead grant, or something like that, you know, we're, we're looking for any kind of information or photographs that you could bring to the history room on Sunday, May 21st, between 2:00 and 4:00, and we will scan the information and give it back to you. Or if you would like to donate, you know, there's, we're missing some yearbooks from Novi students, we're missing some things that we would like to have, and so, we don't want to lose our history that we have. And we're really hoping that people will donate letters, or documents, you know, that's pertaining to something that happened in Novi from years ago. So, please note that, and just come, you don't have to make an appointment or anything, just come to the library on May 21st, which is a Sunday between 2:00 and 4:00. So, okay. Thank you very much, everyone, and I guess I will, if there's no further business to come before the Board, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Member Dooley?
Motion to adjourn.
Do we have a second? Member Sturring?
I'll second.
Okay, let's just go all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, okay.
Thank you.
A turn.
Wonderful meeting.